One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and essence for all.
Welcome everybody to the fourth reading of May 26, 2015. Just a reminder, if there's an emergency access to the rear of the building, that's the closest exit out. And go in your vehicles, please do not move or leave. It's also directed by emergency service personnel. Also, this is not a smoking building, so therefore you must, please go outside and do so. Hope everybody had a great Memorial Day. You know, the Memorial Day parade, and that's something for me, I think is just probably the best thing we've done in the village all year. It's just so neat. And part of it is, is that when you look out there, and you see the number of kids, and you have two bands, so you have probably seventy-five, eighty, maybe a hundred kids involved that come to this, plus parents with their grandkids and their kids. It is probably one of the few things that we do that really shows kids what service the community is. And just, but really, at least we could look for those parades, or festivals, or all these other things that happen in this community, there's nothing better than Memorial Day. Nothing better at all. So I hope everybody had a great holiday, and you got to be with family. So for the job, congratulations on the baby.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Juliette?
Juliette. Juliette Seager Keys, my number three band agent. Thank you.
Oh, Seager, Seager. Pete Seager, I think. Maybe after Pete Seager, they didn't even do a first name. If it was a boy, wouldn't it?
No, no, no. I don't know, it would've been June. But everybody do well, I appreciate it.
Minnesota, May 11.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I apologize for my voice this evening, but we need approval for the board meeting minutes of May 11, 2015, which was quite extensive, so I'm sure there were a few changes.
How did you have to send the numbers to change the contents while you were doing the tour?
That's right. Email me. Yeah.
We got a change, police additional. Motion to accept or dis却? Motion to accept. Second, second, a little bit?
Aye, aye.
Okay. All seven. Got you.
Good evening, everybody. Not much tonight, just some bills. Well, the period of May 14 through the 26th, the bills total, $683,471.70. The five largest of those bills, New York State Employee Health Insurance Monthly Premium, Rosemark, Curb and Sidewalks, Pearl, Boyle and Gaines, $104.175. J. D. Coe, Curb and Sidewalks, retract to Smith Street, $33,007.93. Future Holdings, we got a tax redemption, $17,161.50. And Eastern Resource Recycling, municipal waste dumping fees, $17,128.55. And they totaled $287,151.70. Any other approval?
Motion to accept or dis却? Second. Any questions, additions, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, thank you.
Double carrying stuff. Request approval to set a public hearing for June 8, 2015, to consider revocation. Kevin Compton Hauser's tax license pursuant to village code 255-J.
I just want to point out to the board that we do have a public hearing for 16 South Street and a decision on the plastic fade again, so it's still a good deal.
Okay. This is based upon complaints. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Request approval to remove 15 Church Street from the 2015-16 tax rules, and that $1,688,700. It's a property that was recently purchased by the village for the Sub County Sports Hall thing. That's the Capital One drive-through on Church Street, which will be coming down fairly soon to create more parking. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request approval to remove $894,450 of the tax rule for 67 North, which as a senior exemption was granted but not effective in the 2015-16 tax laws. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request approval for non-union employees to receive a 2.5% increase effective from first to seventh in the union contract. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we're missing Mr. Smith and Mr. Kennedy, and so, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been up in the village on weekends, we're now in deep into dance recital time. Happy to say that
DRS.
Yes. Happy to say that we have not gotten one complaint from the businesses around there that the traffic is too bad, or the parking is not bad, is not good, thanks to our code of course officers who are kind of controlling the situation over there in the mornings, and making sure that people will go into the dance recitals and parking further away, and leaving spaces available for shoppers and diners.
Trust me, can I ask you to send me the list like you did last year? I didn't get it yet, of all the recitals you sent me.
Oh, I sent it to Jim Burridge. He's got it.
Okay.
He's got the list.
Okay.
Yeah, I sent it to him many, many weeks ago. I won't make that mistake again.
Oh, because the Congregational Church had sent me to corner off their spaces for Sunday, and they didn't realize it was a recital week.
Okay, yes, Jim's got it.
Okay, great.
So that's going on in the theater for the next few weeks until there are no more dance recitals. And I understand that this year will be the end of the dance competitions. They will not be having any more dance competitions, yes. The dance competitions are the ones that really put a strain on the theater, because it's an all-day thing, and people come in, and they stay there all day, and cars just jam, the whole area is jammed up. And I guess it wasn't profitable for the theater to do that anymore, and they're just not gonna have it. But the dance recitals, yes, competitions, no. There's, in the dance world, there's a difference.
Well, yeah, I'm sure they'll fill up that space with more dance recitals.
It's very popular with the dance recitals, because it's one of the largest venues around to have dance recitals, and you know, the people can have more grandmas and grandpas dancing, it's the most comfortable thing. Me being the father of a daughter who's at a dance recital, I don't know that, because we have about twenty people coming to see about three minutes of performance. And $200 worth of costumes, and makeup, and hair, and all that stuff. But it's worth it.
Like to request approval to adopt an agreement between the village and CSEA Local 1000, Haskby AFL-CIO Local 852, for the period of June 1, 2015 to May 31, 2018, until you authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Okay, this is the public safety agreement, and it's a 2.5% increase as our regular union people here in the village. They have had two zeros the last, the last two years.
The first, the first two, the first two years of their last contract.
Right, their first. So this is 2.5%. That's a form of motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Request approval for Kathleen Gallo, Emily Gaddy, and Joanne Ruggiero to attend the KBS Training School in Buffalo from July 20 to July 22, at a cost not to exceed $4,500.
Not a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm going to request approval for bond resolution authorizing renovations to the Patchard Theater for performing arts in and for the village at a maximum estimated cost of $600,000, and authorizing subject to permissive referendum the issuance of said bonds. Now, that is for, for new seats at the theater.
The seats are coming out of the
Well, the seats will be coming out of the grant from, from the donor, right? About $5 million that we have to set aside.
The floor, the ceiling?
The floor, the ceiling.
Electric, go on and go on.
Yeah, all kinds of repairs. The floor really needs to be checked out. If you haven't been to the theater lately, and you step on certain areas, you can feel it's a little soft, we just want to make sure that once we get these new seats down, the old seats lasted quite a long time. Yeah, they're, they're about fifty, sixty years old. They haven't been at the theater that long, but we expect the new seats to live that long, too, and we don't want to be putting them on a substructure that's not safe and sound. So we'll be making those kind of repairs. We have some ceiling tiles that need to be replaced, and I believe some filters, so we do, there's filters in the
Cannibals.
In the, in the airflow system will reduce. If you go to the theater, you can see some black around there. I believe these filters are gonna clear up, and that won't happen again. Anything else?
In the lobby, we're gonna be
Oh, the lobby, yeah, the lobby. If you notice on the walls of the lobby, the finish is dull, and it's, it's not a good finish. Well, what happened was when they originally did it, it seems that the fire retardant was applied too early in the process, and didn't give the, I guess it was the finish underneath enough time to dry, and it had a chemical effect. And they're gonna strip it all off, they're gonna redo it. I believe, new carpet in the lobby, too?
Um, no, we'll do some repairs in the lobby.
Okay, just basic repairs. So, yeah.
Part of it is, is just, if we're gonna own the theater, and we're gonna sustain the theater, it has to be sustainable, in terms of the quality of the production that's done, but also the fact that it's mechanically and structurally sound. The seats themselves, one of the issues we have is we don't have a coat. And our seats are eighteen-sees, and for us, little wide bodies, we're going to a nineteen, to a twenty, a twenty seat. So when people come in, especially in the, I mean, if you see them sitting like this, they're a lot more, but I think we're losing any.
No, we're not losing any seats, and we're also providing more handicap space. Now, now our handicap areas are all in the back of the theater. The new handicap areas will be within the house, so within the orchestra, there'll be handicapped areas. And, yeah, it's, it's just the way the seats lay out there, we're not gonna lose any space, even though the seats are wider, believe it or not. So, you know, we're gonna do a lot of improvements. That's gonna be, I guess, starting next January.
Yeah, we're gonna close, right? Just to be able to do some of the things during the course
Yeah.
Of the year, but January, since January, I think, March 15, the theater will be closed for the year.
So, you know, it's a good thing, it's gonna, it's gonna give the theater a facelift that it needs, not only on the outside, but also, as I said, in the floor. We're having engineers have been looking at it for the last few months, doing some work there and checking it out, and, you know, it's, we made an investment in it, and we have to continue that investment, so, you know, this will keep it going for another fifty to whatever, how many years? You know, it's almost, it's almost a hundred years old. It was built in, it was open in 1923, so it's ninety-something years old, so it's something we gotta keep up and keep it good, so it's probably one of the nicest theaters around here, and I think it'll be here for
One of our largest investments.
No, yeah, one of our largest, probably, if not the largest building investment that we have.
Sewer treatment.
Next, sewer treatment plant, right.
We have, we have another bond on this theater, virtually going back to 2001, for, there was $4.1 million, I think it was, and it was a $350,000 a year, and it is a $350,000 a payment to its, and it's the last payment it's made, we made in July of 16. So we'll have one year of these cost over bonds, so it'll be a little bit tight next year, but after that, that $350,000 comes off, which is kind of four million, and I think it's a three and a half or four percent. To this, which will be another fifteen year, it'll be a million dollars, or actually this part, plus another piece of the company of players, about a million bucks. So, we get through next year, then after that, we'll have sizable savings, which should help us out budgetarily quite well.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to talk about what value the theater has to the village of Patchard, talk from businesses on Main Street, especially when there's a show, or during the recital times. I know that a number of the businesses, the restaurants, and Blums always does great business during the, during the recitals, because you have moms and dads there for hours and hours. So, you know, the theater really has a, has a major, major effect on the economy on downtown, and it brings a lot of people into the village.
Yeah, about a half dozen times you hear it from pages section two, you say
Yeah, yeah, it's good publicity, and, you know, they're, they're doing a good job over there. So, that's a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Trustee Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the members, ladies and gentlemen, just a couple of quick little things. I'm sure everybody knows by now about the speed tables that have been installed on Jennings Avenue and Cedar Street. I would say, you know, ninety-five percent positive comments. Comments like, you know, "This is a great idea, you're not gonna put one in front of my house," so I hadn't known that yet. And one resident actually told us that it hurts, it makes too much money to have a speed table in front of our house, I'm still trying to figure that one out. But if that's a skin, you put a dozen in front of my house, then. But anyway, you're working well, the seats are working well with them, both streets seem totally happy.
No, isn't it?
Had an interesting meeting with a solo seller, solo salesman this week, so I know we've talked about that, and Jack will talk to Billy as well, because there's some interesting things they had to offer us, that we maybe should help by the meetings and coffers, I think it's something that we should really start looking at. I was talking about, maybe this afternoon, maybe get a couple of ones for starters, and see how they work, and see if they're satisfied with it, and then, you know, stay in for the day. And go to the 380, you know, see what happens. At least we're starting to talk, we'll get something rolling anyway. Billy, great parade, by the way, too.
It was all you.
Yes, I heard that, it was all trustee.
And he actually marched in the parade.
He got to march in the parade.
First time in twelve years.
That was the only, you know, there was only two figures there, we need another body.
Yeah, you guys were alike, but then Tommy picked
We need two on either side of the yellow line.
Mr. Mayor, maybe take my safety vest off.
I like that.
It's sharp.
You need a red, white, and blue one.
That's true.
Anyway, I'm requesting approval for J. Coe Construction, and then on the Suffolk County for contract number 16-2.5-3A1, to provide the following. Provide and install in various locations curves sidewalks and handicap ramps at a cost not to $2,500. That's a motion.
Hope it's all one.
I'm sorry, say it again?
A, B, and C are all one.
That's what I meant. Uh, B, authorize an additional $1,399.17 for the rider's Smith Street sidewalk installation. Request approval to authorize an additional $700 for handicap ramps that made in Ocean and Rider, oh, made in Ocean and Rider, Maine. That's all a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Requesting approval to adjust start date for PJ Sarich to May 14, we had previously moved it to June 1. We have a couple of guys in D and W went down, so a little bit of an urgency there to get more body, and so we'd like to move that date up to May 14. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Not on your agenda, but I'm requesting approval to hire Michael Robinson and Thomas Bassett as summer help. Again, as I said, we've got a couple of guys injured, we don't know when they're coming back, so we'd like to beef up our proof of summon, and these are two really good, Michael Robinson's done the work for us on and off for quite a while, pretty good recommendations, Paul's comment, that's a motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, requesting approval to set a public hearing to establish, to determine an ownership, establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Jennings Avenue, and we have the speed tables there that's one of the requirements of the speed tables, that would be a 25 mile, and that was owned, so it was necessary for us to change the speed limit on Jennings Avenue, that's a motion.
F and C.
Uh, not C, the seat is already under the law, so it's already
All right, public hearing.
Yeah, the speed table that had been installed on C is south of law, and that's already 25 miles. But I'm gonna check the
Do you want to do for June 8, 25 mile per hour?
Motion?
Billy, a visit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Trustee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. Just a few things on the agenda. First, I'd like to request approval to set a public hearing to add section 281-3C and amend section 285-5A1, a village code to limit the hours in which engine and motor-powered garden and commercial equipment may be used on weekends and legal holidays.
Maybe beginning, and I've gotten some complaints from people about, not as much regular homeowners, but landscapers rolling into neighborhoods at seven o'clock, you know, Saturday morning, sometimes even on Sunday mornings into neighborhoods, so just to put up a time limit as to when they can start, there's some suggestions.
Do you want to say?
Yeah. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to request the approval to amend the fee schedule for the building and housing permits, everybody should have an attachment. This is something that hasn't, the fees haven't gone up in the last seven to eight years. All the fees now are in keeping with other municipalities and townships, and it really just, it's a 20% increase in, you know, in fees that would come in, you know, for permits and stuff like that, fire inspections. So that, that's a motion to
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to request approval to authorize the mayor to submit the section to P. Levin Weber for the Public Safety Director, Jim Burridge, to the State Civil Service Commission for its consideration.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this didn't make the agenda, but we need approval to require the in-service training for the following housing inspectors, Frank Franco, Steve Sinicord, Joe Montalbano, and Joe Brandy, and that's at the Lyndon Nurse Flight Department, and that's at a cost of $30 per inspector, that includes lunch, and it is budgeted for. This is just some in-house training that, that's gonna happen at the Lyndon Nurse. So that's a motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other than that, Senior Housing and Building Inspector at PJ Sarich says the Rum Restaurant is moving ahead with their project, so they should be getting a building permit like any day, or possibly next week, so that will be moving ahead. And assisted living also, handed in their revised plans, they're being reviewed, and pretty soon they'll be getting a okay to go ahead with what they're gonna do then, so that's just a quick update.
We're seeing how long that
Wait, the long list? I was wondering what's going on, because nothing went on, and then, you know, it's taken a long time, but I guess they had to go through everything, because they're gonna have to bootstrap that, you know, like that, so. But it's okay, it's all happening. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, I've got a kind of exciting agenda tonight for change.
Not as much as
First of all, I'd like to point out that the bonding for the theater, the $600,000 a year theater, fifteen years will, will probably be completely paid for
It's 25.
Twenty-five years. You know, we instituted a dollar a head tax, I call it a tax, on the theater participation, so we're gonna get a hundred grand a year, more or less, which will, will go towards that, which I think is a great, a great move. Then I have some, in quick, let me just read these. Request approval for bond resolution authorizing the purchase of various highway equipment for the village at a maximum estimated cost of $509,000, and authorizing subject to permissive referendum the issuance of said bonds. This, a whole variety of equipment, there's a 36-inch skid steer, I don't even know what that is, a small dump truck, a case wheel loader, new Holland skid steer, six, a six-wheel dump truck, that's the big item, and a mechanic for that. All, this is all replacing, I have to say, expiring equipment, and
This seems we tried squeezing it, but it left three forty.
And this is gonna be part of this bond, million-dollar bond that we're, we're seeking to get approval for. That's a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I've got a secondary public works resolution. Resolution authorizing a fuel management system and dispenser replacement in and for the Village Patchard Suffolk County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $50,000, and authorizing the issuance of $50,000 serial bond of said village to pay the cost thereof. That's a motion.
Second.
Now, I told you I had an exciting agenda, right? That wasn't very exciting. I'm requesting approval to hire Stephen Phillips as the watering truck operator at $20 an hour. Now, why is that exciting? That's exciting because you might have noticed if you walked down Main Street, certainly if you were at the parade, you'll see the flowering Patchard, the bid, I wish Dennis was here, and, and I guess the Chamber of Commerce Foundation have planted, we've got our hanging baskets out, we've got our planters out, and the watering trucks are gonna try to keep those things alive for the season. And I have to mention that there are four people, four women, Karen Fur, Paula Murphy,
Carol Tavell, yeah.
Eileen Brennan, five people, Pat Sweeney and Carol Tavell, who probably put in twenty, 25 hours last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, to dress up our village, and you know what they got for it? The thrill of putting plants in planters. They don't, you know, they're, they're volunteers, and their cumulative age is about 240. Maybe only, maybe only, maybe only 210.
Josephine, you can come up and give them a
Don't tell them, it's recorded, right? So she'll see.
Well, we appreciate their, their volunteer
Absolutely.
It really is amazing the work they do.
Yeah. And the last, the last thing that I have, I wish, I wish Dennis and Marion Russo were here, but
Did we finish the
Oh, I'm sorry, you gotta vote it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Southman.
I apologize for the piece a moment. The next several items are all related to a downtown grant that we and the Chamber of Commerce are applying for. Our, our great grant-getting scouts, Marion Russo and Dennis Smith, have identified a county grant which can be awarded to a Chamber of Commerce, not to the village, not to the CDA. Chamber of Commerce has to go through various hoops to be able to apply for that grant, but Marion and Dennis scouted up this grant, and hopefully, we can live it. The CDA has a design from Val de Santa for the, for the village parking lot that's in front of the car val, if I say the car val, everybody knows where it is. It's, it's, it's gonna really, you know, the village looks pretty good, except for that little section that looks like Jersey, parts of Jersey. And we've got a beautiful design, we put trees along the street, along, along Main Street, a nice little pocket park with some benches, and it's, we need some money, okay? It's a pretty expensive project, so Marion found a source of money. And associated with getting that source of money, the, the Chamber of Commerce already voted that they will be, they will apply for this grant, but they require from the village the following items. This is really boring, man. Request approval designated the Board of Trustees as the lead agency pursuant to secret for round 13 of the Downtown Revitalization Grant Program for the East Main Street Parking Lot Streetscape Improvement Project. Go ahead, each one, say. That's a motion.
Second.
Request approval adopting a declared declaration pursuant to secret round 13 of the Downtown Revitalization Grant Program for the Main, East Main Street Parking Lot Streetscape Improvement Project. That's a motion. Request a resolution supporting the application of the Greater Patchard Chamber of Commerce to the County of Suffolk for round 13 of the Downtown Revitalization Grant Program for the East Main Street Parking Lot Streetscape Improvement Project. That's a motion.
Second.
My time is twisting. Request a resolution authorizing the execution of an easement to Suffolk County for round 13 of the Downtown Revitalization Grant Program for the East Main Street Parking Lot Streetscape Improvement Project. That's a motion.
Second.
Request a resolution authorizing the execution of an inter-municipal agreement with Suffolk County for round 13 of the Downtown Revitalization Grant Program for the East Main Street Parking Lot Streetscape Improvement Project. That's a motion.
Second.
And I predict that no other municipality would pass these five complex resolutions in time, get this money, so I'm hoping we get, that's all I have.
That's the exciting part.
Trustee Keys.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much, mayor, board trustees, guests. By now, you all should have gotten the 2015 recreation brochure. It came out really nice this year.
It gave you a great job.
Also included in the brochure was the questionnaire for the parks. It's a, was requested by Quinnon Rothab, who was preparing the master plan for the park and the information that our residents are gonna provide is gonna help them determine which direction the residents would like to have the parks go. So if you have received the program guide, and you have also gotten the Scantron questionnaire, if you have not received this, there are copies available at 380 Bay Avenue, which is the park's office. It's also available online. There's a link to it on the village website, as well as a link to a Spanish version of the questionnaire. So we're very excited to see what ideas that the residents have.
They'll also hear from the parks, as well as at the library.
Nice. Exactly. This past weekend, we had a delightful Memorial Day parade, which was very well attended, and we're happy to see everybody there. It was great seeing David, and everybody's getting so old. But we left out a couple of people I just would like to thank. Some gentlemen from the Highway Department, Louis Garofola and Kerry Datz.
Dominic.
Dominic Donato were very, very helpful. Okay, so, thank you. Moving along, are they supervised or nobody, are we supposed to... No, they self-supervise, they do a wonderful job. I helped them with...
Joe was there.
See, you know, I have a high school diploma for the state of Jersey.
I didn't mean that.
I could tell.
Very obvious. The bathroom for general board is just...
Just needed to roll up the windows. I'd like to request approval for the Patchard Bedford High School to hold the annual homecoming parade on Main Street on Saturday, October 24th, from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. That's a motion.
Second.
Second.
I'd like to request approval for the Spanish Penthouse Church to hold their annual outdoor services from June 12th through June 14th. That's a motion.
Second.
All favorits?
Aye.
Request approval for Frank Wando to build a pergola in the community garden behind 380 Bay Avenue for his Eagle Scout project. I just don't expand on this. I believe that we should have his plans looked at by Peter Sarich, and also, who's that guy? I think I know who he is. Joe Dean, right, Joe Dean. Because at this point, they're a little radio, I think.
Billy's gonna be a permanent structure.
Yeah. So it's important that we get some eyes on him. So I guess we're approving him to build a project.
Pending that, pending.
Right, pending approval. Sarich.
Now, is that gonna go under the new rates?
It's putting a grandfather in all day. The girls. That's a motion.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Okay.
And request approval to hire the 2015 summer recreation staff. You've all have gotten the, this stuff.
Motion.
Second.
All favorits?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Get the out for the board. Mr. McGee, Mr. Crockett, public to be heard. Why? Last man in, first hand out.
Yeah, I didn't have it, but later, still, I love the store.
Totally, totally mine.
Yeah, mine is mine. Mostly mine. No, Blums, the town, the village is getting strong, we see it, a lot of people, we see it, and it's getting, we're, our business is a lot better than last year, other years. You know, we get people from all over the island, Newsday, Queen, Nassau, the old magazine, but we get a lot of people from all over, and the village is getting a lot busier. And we're getting a lot more people who are sitting in front of the store scaring people.
You know, I saw that yesterday.
We need more police.
Yeah, I called public services, public safety.
Those men can't do it, because they can't. We need somebody on the beat, but we're getting bigger now. They should be happy to come to Patchard, be on the beat, because, you know, getting, you know, more business and everything.
I hope you expect it.
Yeah, that's, like, most of them are okay, but...
There are a couple of them.
A couple of them are really nasty and scary.
Do that.
Thank you.
One thing, Mark.
Yes.
I personally went through the garbage.
And who was, who did this?
I couldn't tell, it's all food.
I've seen her put stuff in there.
Put it in the step mall.
Oh, I don't know, nah. I don't know, I've seen her.
Took garbage back from home, I went there on Sunday, right at the church, and went through the garbage.
Right.
Got a lot of looks from people, didn't find anything good.
Recyclables?
No recyclables.
All right.
But yeah, I couldn't find anything that was...
Okay, but every weekend, those white plastic bags.
Yeah, no, it was bad. There were three, three big, full plastic bags. They're coming from someplace.
Maybe somebody from their house, don't wanna pay, cars pick up, I guess.
Hey, Joe. Let's go with the cars pick up. So next weekend.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Mr. Bojek.
You doing Saturday, Jones?
John Bojek.
By the way, you know, we took up Citizen Campaign, just take your energy, and we filmed video of the parade, so it is on YouTube.
Is that a great parade?
Yeah, it is a good parade.
I'm not saying it's a parade, I just said it's a ceremony, because there are so many kids that are there, it just, it's just a different thing, it really is a, that home kind of thing.
Yeah, you're in, so, we've got a couple minutes of you in there, so. I'll do this real quick, because I don't think it takes a lot of time. In the package, you've raised fees for a number of different reasons, but I didn't see an increase for the commercial noise license, or did I miss it?
No, because it's not part of what Peter Sarich does.
Building and housing.
It's just building and housing, comparative to building and housing.
Are you still planning to consider it?
Yeah, yeah, we should have put something together for this one, but we will have something together that, by the next meeting.
Okay.
We discussed it. This year, specifically this one, he did, just where these fees come from, Iced Town or Cave Town, other villages, Peter took a look at where they're at, where we stand, and cut a board to the middle of that pack.
And just two more points. I see you've done a good job with Jennings and Cedar. I went back to Division and River Avenue, which also has a traffic issue too. And I don't think it requires a light stop sign to control some of that traffic, it's dangerous.
No, you're right, I thought about that one. Did I just have anything to put, you're right, possibly a stop sign on the corner of Division and River. Coming north, just stopping cars right there, so.
Oh, yeah, that really has to be historically...
I'm not exactly sure where that's, there should be a stop sign to give some chance for people to make a turn, so.
We need to do a public hearing.
Coming down from River.
Why don't we just do a public hearing?
And you notice that our showers are already looking for it.
Looking for what?
Looking for a stop sign. They hesitate when they're driving north, they're like...
Well, I would think perhaps a stop sign would go right before the tracks coming down River Avenue, because now they're, they're not gonna be living there, because that's gonna become the, it's gonna become that facility. Your neighbors, they're bothered by cars piling up. They would stop traffic for a little bit, so you can make a turn. Not coming from Division.
You're talking about Southbound, right?
Yeah, Southbound, yeah.
You know, I think... Southbound before the tracks, right before the tracks.
You should have a north end.
But I think that's really scary.
Well, you stick a light handle on it.
The three weeks out is, is becoming problematic, because the MTA's involved in that intersection.
Right, so I'll go back to what I suggested. You're on Division, you're heading towards River, what's the problem when you make a left-hand turn? All those cars pouring down River and can't make a turn. Right, that's where, so that's where the stop sign is necessary.
Motion to sit in, the 22nd is... Because the next meeting, we have a half dozen.
I appreciate that.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Division and River. Going for the tracks?
Yeah.
South of the track, coming north.
Heading, yeah, heading north on River Avenue.
At the corner of River and Division, heading north.
But it's a two-directional problem. If you're, if you're going west on Division, and you wanna make a left turn down River Avenue, you're taking your life in the beginning.
You know, I would suggest, why don't you think about where the stop signs should go? I don't think you have to rush to a public hearing.
No, but I think we go to the public hearing, let that be part of the discussion.
Where they go. Can we do two?
Yeah, that's...
Right. Go left and south.
Sure. Division is not, if you're not, you have division control, that, you know, you're gonna have division come in, and Division, as it goes west, can go either way. If you wanna put a light, if you wanna put a stop sign to the north of the tracks on River and south, the only concern is when you're that close to a train tracks, so you have to talk to the MTA. It's easier to say, sorry, that is, that's permission.
Why would you have to do that?
Because the MTA generally wants some input on what they have, because they have control over there. What they're concerned is, the MTA's always expressed concern is that if somebody's calling in, and not necessarily would, if you stopped to go across, but just something we should, we should, before the public hearing, we don't wanna be in a rush, that intersection's been like that for a hundred years since the train first went in. We should talk to the MTA to see if they have any input from their traffic division on that intersection, where they have any work papers on it first, to be wide.
So are we setting here, or not?
Setting. Yeah, setting. And the thing about public hearings, ours, we can go in and look at the two and come out with one. And there's, the public hearing allows for the modifications of whatever, you know, we post.
Well, that's good, thank you. I really got more than expected for the night. And my last thing is a question, now. What? Is this an idea that's come up on our Facebook page? And perhaps this has come before, doesn't the village, Chamber of Commerce have any way of assisting people who wanna buy something in Patchard Village with a program to help them? This program exists, or that program exists, to buy the...
Buy properties, or buy...
Kind of, co-op, house, whatever, you know, to, to give someone some one-stop assistance. I wanna live in Patchard Village, what are the programs that would let me do that? I mean, FHA, Veterans Program, I'm a cop, I'm a teacher, I'm a health aide, whatever those programs are, one place stops for that.
Some of that we push through the line on Housing Partnership, which with Copper Beach, and some of the things that happened in your village, because they have 70 affordable units, Copper Beach has 40 affordable units, and there are a couple, it's all where, River Rock. But the Housing Partnership is about the only, the only one that really does that, where they will sit down and do the mortgage counseling, and help you find a place if there were ones available within that. Like, I know there's one available in Copper Beach.
Right. Potentially, too. And really, the way the Copper Beach model is, if somebody wanted to be in there, that's part of the point, is that we've always relied on the Realtors to do it. So it's an educational component for the Realtors. Like, these Realtors should be aware that they have someone who has a special capacity, such as a veteran, or preference in that way, or income qualification, they should, they should be aware of what those are. And it is part of the learning process with the Realtors to understand even the opportunities that are in Copper Beach.
Right, I guess the words I was trying to find was a clearing house for this information, because yes, you can find a Realtor, one will know, one might not, that's some place to go for that information. I guess it doesn't exist.
It doesn't, no.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thank you. John, I got, thank you for the email, as far as the, that's an old boat ramp. Okay. At the eastern part of Shorefront, and appreciate it. Is it, what's the, Trustee Hill is referring to, we got a picture of what, pictures of the collected property, I wasn't sure if it belonged to the village or to Cave Town. Yeah, no, that's right, yeah, that is the village. It's the village, right? Yeah, we'll take a look. Take a look after cleanup? Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
You need a rock by the way? Dennis, I knew you couldn't be here with nothing to say.
You need to go back to what Dennis talked about to make sure. Quickly, could I just go quickly, what is the seat capacity of the theater?
1,167. Enough?
I don't know, I'm just scared, we were talking about the bond issue earlier, so I just, I support that wholeheartedly. Any way we hit the meters reprogrammed, we say free up to not take money on Sundays. We just posted a ticker on the front of it, there's a great opening right along, right where they, right at the top of the head, two inches wide, width of the thing, we put a sticker right there, says three Sundays.
The signs reflect that.
Yes, the signs say Monday to Saturday.
I, I understand, it really does, it's, it's there, but it's oblique, and it's, I get, I see a lot of that complaint there, and...
You're in the middle of it, so if anybody sees it, it's a unit.
Yeah.
Free to village residents and free for Sundays.
What's that?
Just to expand on that for a second, free to village residents and free to Sundays.
They let it back.
We, yeah.
My wife enjoys paying for the meter.
Yeah. I pay for a meter. And you're right, you link the website, last time I talked about it, it does link, I had to do some negotiation with the app, but it does actually let you pay for any particular line. And when there's a broken meter, I've said before, you can't send one person out to fix that meter. I see this, those village guys out there, open meter up, they clean the paper out, whatever, they're gonna get hurt. There are some problems with people in Patchard, we do have some, because they don't belong to it. And I, this is just a personal thing, I don't wanna see one person opening that meter, because even though one person can't get to the bottom of it, I understand it, all of us understand that, the other element doesn't understand that, when you see one man open that meter, and seeing where it's come close to becoming an issue.
Well, I don't know.
They're gonna get attacked, they're gonna get attacked.
Somebody's gonna rob someone.
They don't always work in pairs.
But they are told that if they were confronted, that those boxes are contained.
I understand.
Give them the box.
They're always getting to it, you know what I mean? When they're by themselves, when they're cleaning out the paper, I just hate seeing that, that's just my personal village resident concern, I don't wanna see one of them accosted, one that can't get it, and it's silly. I, that's, I, yeah, they work in pairs. And the skid steer is very vital to the snow removal that you guys use.
The sun washes.
And if you can make sure the thing has heat, the guy did a great job last winter, but one of those machines, one guy spent a lot of hours on with no heat, that machine,